I don't want to break the down. Oh, I have copies, there's copies. Does anybody that's in town have them? Does everybody have? Joan, you left yesterday before I got these passed out. Did you get the new handout? And Joe, I think he did.
I've got it at 10 o'clock tonight.
I have copies recently. I'll give out the copies.
I don't want to break the down. Oh, I have copies, there's copies. Does anybody that's in town have them? Has everybody had? Joan, you left yesterday before I got these passed out. Did you get the new handout? And Joe, I think he did.
I've got it at 10 o'clock tonight.
Well, I have copies recently. I'll give out the copies. Um, I'm going to go. I have several copies.
It must be my copy on 19th of August.
I have 10 more copies.
I'd like to call me in the Tivannan Town Council. Do you want to stand for the part? Counsel Perry.
Present.
Counsel Hilton.
Present.
Counsel Demidias.
Present.
Counsel Shabbat.
Present.
Counsel LeBeau.
Here.
Counsel Ryan and Counsel Edwards are absent.
Did you want to open your remarks?
Yeah, we've noted we're at order with the court president. Thank you.
All right, so we left off at section 12. Question 12, excuse me. Um, and question 12 reads, "Shall the Tivannan Town Charter be amended to modify and shorten your descriptions for the department head duties and responsibilities to clarify that the town council may hire department heads with at-will employment terms without mandatory fixed terms as recommended by the Charter Review Commission?"
Yep, thank you, and good evening, everybody. It's great to be back with you here again for our second session. This question has intended to be substantially as sent over from the town council. This, I believe, is the only question that doesn't supply potential draft language because we're essentially, you have already done that. So I think you're probably already familiar with this. I will say as well, and again, I don't know if there's time tonight, but we've had a lot of conversation on the Charter Review Commission about empowering the town council to do more with consolidating departments. And I don't know that this proposal directly does that, but what it does do, as I understand your proposal, is it shortens some of the duties and responsibilities of department heads, so you're not putting that level of detail in the charter. But of course, you can set that either through your general resolution policy or through whatever employment arrangements that you would make. So I think this is pretty close to what you were already considering. I know that was a while ago. If there's one tweak at all, maybe by way of clarification, is I read the markup that you sent as not requiring a three-year minimum contract length, and we wanted to make sure that not only would we agree with that proposal, but we don't think you need to have a fixed contract length at all if that's your decision. So...
Excuse me, which one are you talking about?
Question 12. Question 12.
12.
It's question 12, which we've assigned as proposal ID number 121. The sponsor, well, the requester was the town council, and I sponsored it for further consideration. It was approved by the Charter Commission.
Any discussion from the council? It's everyone's pleasure. Do you want to approve this one? I'll need a motion. That's what we've been doing.
We've been approving them, though, to consider. Not that this is...
No, this is just to consider.
...final language, but that in theory, we're going to continue to work on refining this question, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we send forward question 12.
Second.
I don't think we made motions on the ones we...
Yeah, we did. We, Nancy, yes. Yes, we made motions on... You mean motions either to not move them forward... Or to move them forward. Or to get better language. To consider the process. So this motion is to move it forward. I can confirm it. Joe?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment about including language about at-will employment for department heads in the charter. I've noticed in the short time that I have been here that it's rather difficult to recruit people for positions like this. And it's one thing to have the discretion to negotiate a contract the way you deem fit, but to put it right up front that it could be, you know, at-will, it's not going to help attracting candidates.
Why do you draw a contract as at-will, right?
So the way the charter is drafted now is that they specify the minimum contract term. This minimum would just take out the language that refers to that, so it would basically give the town more discretion to either enter a contract of a certain length, shorter length, possibly a longer length, or no contract. And then if there's no contract, it would be an at-will employment. So this just basically puts discretion to the council.
But Tony has always explained that any contract was at-will regardless if there was terms in it.
If you're, well, for the solicitor in certain department appointments...
Well, after three years.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, once the contract expires, then you're at-will.
Then it's an at-will contract anyway, so...
Yes. And if I could just jump in, I agree with all that. And in addition, this is one of these that has two substantive pieces. The other piece is that it follows your lead on shortening the charter-mandated duties and responsibilities, at least in some. I did notice some were shorter than others. Frankly, I think you have a strong support to make them even shorter. The two people next to me actually would almost make them one or two lines each, so we stand, you know, would be happy to support if you want to do further work on that as well.
I see what you're saying, John. Definitely. Does anyone have any other comment about this? Well, the motion is to just consider so we can tweak it if we need to, and we actually have to discuss that one. So motions were made and seconded without any further discussion.
Did you have a second? I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
All those in favor? Question 13. Shall the Tivannan Town Charter be amended...
What was the motion? I did not hear it. I'm sorry. I may be the only one in the room that did.
The motion was to... Was to send forward and define language. Question 13. Shall the Tivannan Town Charter be amended to appoint the candidate for an elective office with the highest number of votes from the last election to serve for the duration of the term of a vacated office as recommended by the Charter Review Commission?
Next highest office.
That's what I said.
Miss next.
With the next highest number of votes.
Thank you. So this actually is a substantial, as I might have said, we've approved something like 80 or 90 proposals out of 135 that we formally triaged. This one, I think, substantially covers three, one which was generated from the commission as well as, I don't know that they were in official capacities, but from members of the Budget Committee and the School Committee. We believe that this will add clarity to the process and frankly reduce a little bit of your workload since there won't be, you know, as many interviews. And I do recognize that it would pull a little bit of the discretion from your body, but it would also, it would also just, I think, streamline the process. One thing that should be captured here is, and I hope it is, we wanted to exclude write-in candidates. Stop me if this is too much level of detail, but the reason I'm mentioning this is because we put a lot of debate in this, much like we did about the signatures from the FTRs. And we thought that at least if you declared as a candidate and you went out and got your 50 signatures and you were out in the public limelight for several months, that that at least showed some requisite support. Where for the write-in candidates, we actually had a really good debate on that. I think we even reconsidered our initial vote, so I just wanted...
Last sentence.
Oh, it is here on the last sentence. Okay. And so I just wanted to just sort of show you, there was a touch point, at least as far as we were concerned.
Any comments? The council?
Yes. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this idea for elected positions to a body, you know, it's how it works for the council, for the Budget Committee, or the School Committee, or the Charter Review Commission. I worry about it, though, when it comes to, you know, sole occupant positions like the treasurer or the town clerk, because those are often offices where not a lot of people run. And, you know, you could have somebody decide they're going to put their name in for town treasurer for giggles, and they're the next highest vote-getter, and they have absolutely zero qualifications to be the treasurer of a town with, you know, a $50 million budget. So, and the same with the town clerk's office, which has enormous legal responsibilities. So I'm a little mixed in that. I'm okay with it for things where it's, you're naming a person to a body, but I'm not sure I'm okay with it where you're naming a person to, you know, be the treasurer or be the clerk or even, I mean, you've got to run for municipal court judge, right?
Probate.
Probate. I mean, you've got to run for probate judge, too. I mean, those offices I worry about because somebody could just, you know, put, and we've had a situation where in the not-too-distant past where the treasurer left and we were really, really lucky that we had a qualified candidate to take over who wasn't, hadn't run for election. Just my...
You can put in a disclaimer to the, that's the simple way to do it.
Yeah, we could, we could.
I would say, too, and I...
I just like the word disclaimer.
In the charter. We had a lot of debate about whether, and again, I think the people sitting right next to me feel very strongly, and this was a close vote, whether we should bake in more minimum requirements for positions, particularly positions like the treasurer or the clerk. Ultimately, we, I think the majority of the commission felt that it was a voter decision, but your point is well-taken in that I share that, I know we had a lot of debate about qualifications, and, you know, it was part of this, who's going to evaluate what the qualifications are, and is that really the level of detail? So we ultimately didn't go there, but similar to the topic that you're raising, that did come up.
Is anyone on the council?
Oh, yeah. Did, do you want to jump in on it?
Do you want to say something?
She's going to tell you how she feels about qualifications.
I had put in the proposals to see how it would go, looking around at the different towns, whether these very important positions should be appointed rather than elected. And I went through all the writing and the looking and the, all that, and wrote everything up, what the qualifications could be, and it comes down to people wanted to keep it elected. So when it's elected, it's whoever throws their hat into the ring. You can't do anything about the qualifications. You simply can't. And who's, who's going to qualify that when they're putting their declaration papers in? Who's going to do that? Is it the Board of Canvassaries or... I still think, you know, might be something you want to think of in the future, maybe appointing these positions, and you're not going to have maybe non-qualified people going. But there's no qualifications for town council. There's no qualifications for many, many things. So I think that you could have, the same thing happened. You could have a treasurer win that's not qualified, and the person with the second highest number of votes might be qualified or not qualified. I don't know how you get around that. You start getting into appointed...
Anyone else? Joan? Andy? So it's your pleasure with question 13. Do you want to...
I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion to move forward. My only concern about individual positions versus council board or committee positions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Um, motions were made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Again, I'm sorry to do this, but Ms. Hilton did not speak into the microphone. Her motion could not be heard.
I'm sorry. I made a motion to move question 13 forward while noting my concerns about individual positions like treasurer or clerk versus council, board, or committee positions.
Just to make it clear, once we, I know we're moving this forward, but I think the plan will be that once we get together what we want to consider, then the town council will meet as a group and decide which ones will be up there for public hearing.
That's what, that's...
That was my plan.
Well, that's what I was, the impression I was under. We're going to approve what we, going to take a second look at. We'll get the second look at it and decide what goes on in the charter, because I'm on the impression we're only putting 10, but that's...
Five to 10 is what I suggested, but 10 would be my maximum.
Because right now, we're zipping through, we have two here, so I'll just...
Absolutely. Um, question 14. Shall the Tivannan Town Charter be amended to clarify that town officials and employees are permitted to engage in advocacy or activities relating to voting contests and other political activities on their own personal time when not using town resources, to ensure that any list data or other information used by any government body, department, or official or political activity be made publicly available for their use by the public as recommended by the Charter Review Commission? I'm confused about this one.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's a lot of language here. No problem. So this originated originally from a request from our, from the school committee, through its liaison. And the concern here is, I think, really two parts. And this, the language you have here picks up on, I think it's fair to say, a lot, not every last word is proposed by the school's attorney, Mr. Robinson. But there's really two goals, as I see it, and then I'll yield to the liaison if she'd like to speak further. But number one is to really make clear that, you know, you're allowed to do whatever you want to do on your own time, right? So just because you happen to be on the school committee, you happen to be an employee of the town, if it's off-hours and you're on your own time, not using town resources, they felt there was an ambiguity there, and we're, you know, we're on the march to resolve ambiguities. Secondly, was making sure that there's no question that public buildings can be used. I mean, we can sit in this very building, we are here now, and advocate on a political question as we are right now, and we just need to make sure that if you're doing that as part of your official duties, or if it's a public forum, but it's equally open to all parties, you know, all organizations, just straight classic First Amendment stuff here, this, I view, is resolving ambiguity, but we did try to meet the concerns of the school committee, and I don't want to put them on the spot, but that was, that was the intent. It was initiated by them.
Sally, how do you feel about this?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Everything's falling apart.
So anyway, this was 1218. This is quite famous.
Right, this is 1218. Okay, I thought so.
This is 1218, quite famous when it was passed. I was in the room, sitting right there, and they brought it forward, and one of the members of the council said, "This is very interesting, and it's very concerning." And so they said, "Why?" And she said, "Because of that pesky constitution." Because at that time, our feeling was, not just the school committee, town council, everybody, if you advocate, like when we stand in front of the polls and advocate for something, we're elected officials, it said labor, we were going to get in trouble. Someone came over to me in this, in this chambers, which many times they were asking me about the budget. I felt I might not be able to say anything. We talked about it a lot. The first part of this, I totally agree with. The second part turned into 1219, which was brought at the last minute. And I think that...
Okay, so the first part...
The first part is saying that we can do it on our free time and everything. That's very, very exciting to see and liberating.
When not using town resources.
Yeah, right, right. But the second part, I'm confused about it. Came right at the end, as I said, and it might be that if we use something, like in the schools, they want all that information. Well, as you know, we can't give out that information, that the schools have proprietary, like lists of things like that. We could never just give that out to the town, so that's a problem.
Yeah, I'm confused about that part.
The second part. The first part, I think, is excellent. I appreciate that you worked on that and with Mr. Robinson and came to that agreement. But the second part, I know we wouldn't be able to do, so, thank you.
Sure. So just briefly, and then I'll yield to Mr. Karen. I view, at least as I sit here, you know, and I'm not here to represent the town, but I mean, as a practicing attorney, I view list data and information kind of in the same First Amendment vein as a public resource, as a public space. So what we're saying is, go for it, but if you do it, you have to be open to everybody, and that's, you know, that's my sense of what it is, but I want to let Mr. Karen speak to it.
But you won't be working as a public official. You're going to be on your own personal time, so you really don't, that's what I don't understand. The beginning says it's your personal time.
Right. As long as it's your personal time.
No, 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 I'm not done. So the personal time at the beginning, what you're, so the second part has nothing to do with your personal time?
Correct. Correct.
Correct. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, yeah, I left the paper over there. My bad. However, I believe there's, is there a semicolon between those two sections? There seem to be disjoint, and the idea here is that if a, if, if there is information, okay, within a government organization, okay, and if it's information and it's coveted information or confidential information or whatever it may be, then, and if it's used, but if it's used, which is kind of weird, if it's used by anybody, whether it be at a government agency or by the public, if the list is handed over to the public, or handed over to a member perhaps of a body who then goes on their own time and brings the list home and uses the list, it seems that that would be an improper use of confidential information to, in this case, get out the vote. So this, this proposal seeks to say that if a list is going to be used, not inconsistent with the first part, where we can't use town resources...
But this is a confidential list.
Well, any list, any list at all, if it's going to be used to get out the vote, then clearly it's a public list, and it needs to be available for fair use and inspection by everyone in the town. Because it's certainly, it certainly, may I, may I say, it's certainly not fair to allow certain, certain segment of either a town body or a certain member of the town have access to that information and use that information to get out the vote and target a subset of the town. This is the key. It targets a subset of the town versus targeting the entire town. So the way to resolve it is to simply say, fine, it's fair use. So if somebody, if, if a school department is allowed to use the information to get out the vote, then the list is a public information. And if there's a problem with that because it's confidential information, then perhaps the list ought not be used for getting out the vote.
First of all, I don't believe that any of that is confidential information.
Oh, okay.
And second of all, and if it is, then you have a complaint, and you should file it.
I will.
But, second of all, when people just target a certain group, but there's other groups that just have telephone calls to the whole town, so what is the difference?
The difference is, the difference is, is that the list is a government list versus a phone list that somebody goes on the internet and buys.
But it's not a government one.
It's a government list.
So the first subsection B, you know, that really just restates what you have a First Amendment right to. So in that respect, if it's, if the, if members of the government feel it's necessary for clarity, then it could be included. Subsection C, I have some concerns with. One with how it's drafted, and then some deeper concerns. The first concern with how it's drafted is that it states that, it's worded very broadly, to say, if any list, data, or other information is compiled or used by a government body, a department, official, or employee, that could be, you know, a town council member goes home on their private time and compiles their own list, and then this would fall to the wording of this section. The broad, the deeper issue, though, I think, is that the government information that's required to be made public is governed by the Access to Public Records Act. If it falls under that act, it's going to have to come out. But then again, there's also certain provisions under that act and other acts that require certain information to be made confidential. So if, given a hypothetical situation, and I'm not saying there is one, but if there were a hypothetical situation that someone misused the information that they got access to, there may be another remedy to that. But the remedy isn't to cause the town to violate some other provision that requires that to be made confidential, especially when there already is state statute which would preempt this, which requires government documents to be made public.
Right.
So with regard to pub, the public access to documents, that's governed by the APRA. You don't need this other provision that could run into trouble down the line.
And if this is under an exclusion of the APRA and the information upon request is deemed confidential, then the information that was used to a targeted subset of the town to get out the vote would not be available to the entire town. So if it was under an exclusion of, if it's under APRA, great. But if I file an APRA request tomorrow and I find out that it's confidential information, then I sit here and say, well, why was it used to get out the vote if it's confidential information? And that, I want to know how to get that information, which I think this charter proposal allows.
Jeffrey, you're making accusations, and this is just complete sour grapes, and I get it. But I'm sorry, if you have a problem with how the vote was...
It has nothing to do with the vote. It has to do with use of...
Absolutely does, Jeffrey.
All right, all right, guys.
This is sour grapes, and we see right through it.
I would, I'd like to, I'd like to say something. I'd like to clarify, first of all, I think that there's a difference between a government entity that may use a mailing list or a Facebook page or whatever to remind people that an election is coming up, don't forget to vote on November what it is, and isn't endorsing any candidate or any position. But, you know, if there's evidence that, that, you know, people have used confidential government information to promote positions, then, you know, there's a, then there's a process to complain about that. But, and if there is, then somebody should complain. But as far as, you know, other people's private lists, I mean, you could be, for example, you could be a teacher, and the teachers could have, totally separate from the school, they could have their own friends' mailing list, you know, where it's just a bunch of teachers who mail whatever random interesting things to each other. It has nothing to do with school and has everything to do with the fact that there, they happen to be friends. And then all of a sudden, if one of them, they're supposed to hand over that email list, it's just like what, it's just like what Peter said. Either the list is public information and anybody can have it, just like you can go to the clerk and request, "I want a list of everybody who voted in the last election," or whatever it is, or it's a confidential list, in which case, you know, it, and belongs exclusively to the government, in case it, it shouldn't be used to promote a particular point of view in an election, but could be used to remind people to vote in general, or it's somebody else's own personal list. And if that's the case, I mean, would your organization then want to say, "Well, we'll give up our mailing list, too"?
But we're not the government. You're talking about government entities here. But if it's personal, it shouldn't be used to get out the vote.
And if you have proof that it is, then you need to go through the property and not use it.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to just bring it full circle. I don't disagree with what Peter said about APRA, but I, I will kind of take it back to this broader theme where we've been wrestling with, when do we repeat things in the charter that already exist in state law? So if you look at, say, section 1203, it says that all elected and appointed officials are subject to the Code of Ethics. And I think, I think we'd agree that that's true whether or not that exists there. So I just, I know you're on the specifics of this one part of C, which again, I view is simply just an extension of a public forum. But I just thought it might be a nice opportunity to point out that it's possible... But I just thought it might be a nice opportunity to point out that it's possible, I think, to go further than APRA, if it's approved by the General Assembly. And even if it's meant to be coexistent with APRA, that seems to happen in other places in the charter, so I just wanted to make that observation.
And I would agree with you, except the only issue that I have with that subsection is that it has a different mechanism for what is required to be made public, where if it simply just referenced anything that's available on the APRA, that's used for advocacy purposes shall be made public, then that wouldn't be a problem. But because it has a different mechanism that could reach, that could reach information that's kept confidential under other statutes, that would be problematic.
But my issue with that is, we already have that in Section 1201, so...
But Section 1201 says, oh, it just makes a blatant statement, public officials shall comply with the Code of Ethics.
No, no, that's 1203, I'm talking about 1201 for open records, so...
Right, so...
May I ask a question? Because I, again, I feel like a little bit this might be a problem in search of a solution. Is there an example of this abuse that somebody can supposedly...
I don't know if I want to get into this, to tell you the truth.
And, but, but hang on a second, I'm asking the committee chair, I'm not asking the audience here.
Yeah, it's not part of the audience.
Yeah, he has to make this move.
At this moment, at this moment...
No, no, it's fine, I mean Denise and I agreed, we were going to kind of, I mean, we're not, everybody get their turn, but I get the first...
I mean, because we're talking in theoretical terms, there is at least an example you can...
I can, and I'd rather not comment, because it involves, as luck would have it, it literally involves both Denise and me, but to be responsive to your question, many years...
Well, then I think you need to accuse me of whatever you want to accuse me of.
No, I'm not accusing you, I said it involves, right. Well, will you let me speak, and I'll tell you? Okay. So, because I'm answering your counselor's question. So, here's an example of...
No, I have, go ahead, go ahead.
Right, so, back in the day, back in 2008, there was an example where the school department had sent a transmission to a subset of the town, and not the entire town. And as luck would have it, I actually made a complaint about that to the school committee while Denise was on it. So, it just, these are real examples, we don't need to litigate that, I'm not accusing Denise of anything. But it isn't just a hypothetical. Having said that, and I will let Jeff speak, but again, I'm not sure this is in the top 10, or the top 5, you know, we made it in the top 20, it was a request of the school committee, and frankly, although I don't know that Peter and I agree for different reasons, I think we're kind of already covered under 1201. So to me, this is a clarification of ambiguity. But I do think there has been an example, and I have personal experience with that.
But that was before the charter.
That was before the charter was changed.
Absolutely, absolutely, so the question is, I totally, I agree with that. And that's why my view of this list data and information is kind of like keeping up with the new century. It's really the same thing as a public forum, just in a different form. That's why I have a very narrow view of this, and I don't know that it needs this much, you know, but I'll yield to Jeff, if I, he might have been the sponsor in this.
Yeah, I'll just be a moment. The, I don't have it right now, I can produce it tomorrow, but I have a document, which is a transmission through some sort of an automatic, some sort of an automated email system, with Tiverton School Department letterhead, at which the, it was transmitted to, the person I got it from was a school parent, and it said, "To be sure and go vote in the FTR with a date." Now, now, it was transmitted to a list that is part of the school lists, okay? Didn't, I didn't get one as a citizen, as a taxpayer. A subset of the community got the list, and it said, "Get out and vote," and it was done with the school system. So, there is an example, this just happened a month ago in the FTR. So there was an example of, a similar example in 2008, perhaps that Rob referenced, I'm referencing an example from a month ago. So, Patricia, Counselor Hilton asked a question, is there an example? And I'm giving that example, but I don't have the document tonight.
To me, that isn't an example, because that doesn't say, "Go out and vote for Budget 1 or 2."
No, I agree.
That says, "Go out and vote."
And if it said, if it said, "Go out and vote for..." If it said, "Go out and vote for Budget 1," it will be covered by the first half of 1218. This seeks to limit the situation where you use the government resources to target a subset of the population only, and then don't let others have the list.
Madam President, I want to call this question, I had enough.
Yeah, I've really had enough, because like I said, this farm is not going to be used for sour grapes and political aspirations, and I'm sorry for that. But if there really is a true complaint, the charter should not be abused for that. Go to the proper people and get your complaint heard, but it should not be heard in this farm. Now, no, the question was, is that to be moved?
I have to take issue with you using sour grapes, we're using something that did happen.
Donna, this, you are out of order, you are not allowed to speak.
You're out of order saying sour grapes.
No, I am not, this is my meeting, and I am not out of order.
Because that's political to be saying that.
Donna, I am, and Jeffrey is being...
That's political to be saying that, and you know it is.
I don't care, to tell you the truth.
Don't use it again.
I will use it all I want, this is my meeting.
Then we'll use it too.
All right, this is a joint meeting, but we, you know, we're respectful of your vote, but we're kind of...
I'm not going to use sour grapes.
I know we're actually going to get mad at me about this, but... Listen to me very carefully. Jeffrey is talking about, about an instance where Budget 2 lost. Okay, this is political, this isn't what this farm is used for. The complaints from that...
And so we wouldn't be using the...
All right, that is not what this charter is used for. Take it up with the proper channels, but not here.
Now, there was a motion to move the question, is that correct, really?
Correct.
Okay, so, do I have a second to move the question? All those in favor to stop discussion on question 14? 3-2, okay, so...
I haven't had an opportunity to even say anything.
But he said to move the question, John, move that.
There was no question, there was no motion made, so there was nothing to move.
But to move the discussion, there was.
There was no motion made to move the question.
So, this is what we're going to do. Peter, what do you suggest we do with this question?
I think you ought to vote on it, once you make the vote.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, what do you suggest you do with this?
You want us to stop personal time when not using town resources?
You know...
And then from that point on, you don't...
I would say, if you wanted to keep A and B, you could.
What's A and B, though, I don't...
Okay, B is a section that just says, you know, you have a First Amendment right to go out and distribute publications, et cetera. That's already governed by, you know, you have a constitutional right to do it, but if you want B in there for clarification, you can. But I would, if you wanted to move ahead with this, with the caveat that Section C should not be included.
And Section C is too, see, we don't have it as Section C.
Okay, Section C is about the lists and the data.
And to ensure that any list or data you want, you suggest that gets excluded.
Madam President.
Now, I'm going to ask for a motion for that to be approved, and then we can talk about it.
Okay, because I just want to make sure everybody's heard, I thought, I just had enough of what was going on out there, the best way I could do it without me and me.
So do I have any kind of motion on this question right now, then I'll have discussion among the council?
I'll make a motion to Section A.
Do I have a second? I second that. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor.
I don't have a discussion.
Oh, yeah, discussion, go ahead, Joan, I'm sorry, I had a rough night last night.
Okay. All right, so, we know there's issues with Section 1218, because as an elected official, I felt hamstrung on being able to communicate anything, as Ms. Black says from the school committee, on any process involving an election. So, and I do have First Amendment rights, and I should be able to speak on things, and certainly, department heads, officials, and employees have those same rights. So, that's where, we need clarification in this section, so that our First Amendment rights are not affected. So, I agree with all that, and that's good. Now, the Section C, and all this with the list and all that, I wrote down a note that said, "I want to see examples," what do you mean? Okay, so, and what does the APRA and state statutes have to do with this? And you may not like that, but I like to have an example. Because I think that with technology, we have moved in a communication direction. And this charter has been built based upon old technology, where it was just mail, phone calls, et cetera. It wasn't built for email, Facebook, and all that stuff. So, I want to like, have an idea of say, okay, how does this impact how we use Facebook? How we use email addresses? That's where my concern is, okay? So, in the town of Sitewith, there is a function in town government where you can sign up for emails from the town government. So you key in your email address, and you can be informed of everything that's going on in town. So you get emails on what our P's are coming up, what events are happening in town, and all this stuff. Now, that would be considered a list, and it's given to the government, and there's, the people are saying, yes, I want to be informed of what's going on in town. So, that's the question, is it a public list? I don't know. So, if I sign up with the town, I want emails from the town. I'm not giving up my email address for the general population in town to send me an email. So I am specifically giving my email address to the town to inform me of events, activities, topics that are going on in town. And that would be, including, get out the vote. That's how I view it. So I want, what I, I need to see is like, a legal opinion on this. What does this mean? How does email and Facebook, how does that feature into this? Because it could be a Facebook page that says, "Don't forget to vote." It could be put on the fire department Facebook, the police department Facebook, the town, the town council Facebook, the school committee Facebook, the school department Facebook. I don't know where that stands in all this. So in my opinion, yes, it's a good question. I'd like to know where this new technology stands as far as information, and information availability. If I give my email address to the town to keep me updated on things, I expect the town to keep that and not give it to all the 15,000 residents in town. On the flip side, I also have Facebook, and if I friend Facebook, I don't expect somebody at Facebook to give my, my information to everybody else in town to send out a blast.
Yep.
So I need to know, where does this new technology stand? That's, that's my question.
So I think, yeah, that's a, that's a good question, and I think what that will cover that type of situation, if someone were to come in, you give your email to a list, and you want to be informed from the town, if someone were to come in and make a request for that, the Access to Public Records Act has a provision that, that it's a balancing test, where the town has to weigh the privacy interests of any individual that could, could be exposed by granting the request, versus the public's interest in receiving that information. So, if you went under the APRA, under the hypothetical you gave, now it's, obviously when you have a balancing test, it's not clear cut, you got to use your judgment, but I think of the hypothetical you gave, probably would be an unwarranted invasion of privacy to give out someone's email list. And let's say, you know, commercial entities will look for email lists from public bodies, so if, so they can, so they can mark it. Let's say someone knew that to the town of Tiverton, and they wanted, you know, all the data we have on emails from that type of setup. Now it would probably be an unwarranted invasion of privacy under that balancing test. Now, I think where this provision goes astray is that it takes it out of that balancing test that's contemplated by the APRA, and sets up another mechanism where it requires you to give out information, even if it is private, just because there's some use of it. Now, granted, if we were to even grant the, the person that submitted this request, or that's advocating for it, and say, let's imagine a hypothetical where information is used in a manner that was totally wrong, you know, totally inappropriate, we'll just imagine that hypothetical, you know, let's say, teachers were giving students whose parents are Democrats, campaign information saying, "Vote for so-and-so for president." That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be right, but it wouldn't mean that those children's information would become public as a remedy. There may be another remedy, but it wouldn't be a remedy in releasing information as a result of that. So, I think you're right, that there is that issue. The Access to Public Records Act addresses that. It doesn't set up a clear cut line for addressing it, but it has allowed the government to address that. But I think where this goes astray is that it kind of supersedes that.
All right, would it be too much to ask for more background information on APRA, and how it applies to technology? Because you have, this says government officials, department officials, employees, an employee could be a member of a PAC, an employee could be a member of a town committee. So if they use those email addresses or Facebook page, how does that impact that? So, I, I'm, this is specific to these particular bodies, but these particular people can also be part of other entities, and could be sharing the same information. And it may look like it's, it's a government list, but it could be actually a PAC or a town committee list.
So if we move this forward for consideration, and ask Peter to supply us with some APRA information, would that be okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I have to amend the motion, it's just that we're going to move it forward, and we'll take note that that's what we need for that question.
Thank you.
For the record, don't mess with him.
Don't mess with him.
With the Attorney General and that stuff, because they have pain in the butt.
Okay, that's a lesson to be learned. Okay, so I have a motion in a second, to move this question forward for consideration. All those in favor? Unanimous. And that was A and B. That's, that's A and B, if I say. But, but you know, we can always talk about it as we go. Question 15, does Tiverton Town Charter be amended to eliminate the town council's role in the charter complaint process by sending complaints directly to the municipal court, and to revise penalties, questions, complaints against the municipal judge on authorized expenditures or obligations and protection against reprisal, as recommended by the Charter Review Commission?
Okay, thank you. Yep, this one is, again, sort of in the nature of efficiency, the, there have been issues in the past that have involved both the clerk and the, and the town council, there have been issues with recusals, and I don't think that, frankly, I mean, I would speak for the town clerk, but I don't think anybody really wants to be put in that position. So, this proposal would send charter complaints to the municipal court, which is a very serious business, and I actually believe that you will see less frivolous complaints if they have to be submitted to the municipal judge, which, you know, is a serious place to be, there's, you know, possibilities of sanctions for frivolous complaints in front of a court. So it's pretty straightforward, and again, I, you know, we have, we have gone through this charter trying to find places where ambiguities could be clarified, and, and sometimes some of these ambiguities have come up through prior instances. So, we're not trying to relitigate those instances, we're just trying to solve problems going forward, and that is, that's the idea of, of this one as well.
Comments, any counsel question?
I should say, I'm sorry, just, I wanted to say one other thing, is that for the legal eagles here, there is still the possibility that the court would have some type of initial finding stage, short of a full-blown trial. So I think the, the idea of having sort of an initial stage at the clerk level, or at the council level, is to make sure that frivolous, I hesitate to use the word frivolous, but complaints that, that might not make the, you know, really be colorable, as you might say, go forward, the municipal court could still do that. So I think at the end of the day, you're going to have a lot less of this activity.
It was, but I don't know. You've got that one going.
We may have one too, do we have?
My question, so it would bypass the clerk completely? So who would you say, no, right?
Well, the clerk still has to, to be a clerk, but I think we take the clerk out of the position of having to, to referee and sort of play probable cause hearing, you know, I, same idea that we were shooting for with the... idea that we were shooting for with the FTR. You know, the clerk is just like any other clerk of a court, which is to make sure that the requirements of the paperwork are valid on their face and to send them along. So it's meant to limit, it's meant to take the clerk out of the business of trying to referee these cases.
So the clerk would decide if it goes to the municipal court, just like she does?
Well, no. I mean, it's, the clerk would make sure that the ample paperwork was there. I mean, if the, just like a clerk of a regular court.
The clerk would just hand it to the judge and say, you know.
So it would be different than what she does now.
Yep.
Yeah, she's, that's what I'm asking.
They, oh, this, the language that's attached, the language I'm looking at would actually eliminate the requirement that the clerk determines the charges are sufficiently set forth. So that would be where.
So anything would go to the?
Right. Yeah. So.
But the complaint has to be filed with the town clerk acting as municipal court. So just like any other court, there's a clerk, the clerk has, there has to be a complaint in order to initiate a process.
But that's not how the process goes. So it's a total change.
Yeah. And the only thing that you may want to consider, and you could do this, the language sets a 180-day appeal period. The state statute sets a shorter period, so that's one issue. The other issue would be, you may want to consider, if you wanted to allow this, you know, if a public official gets a complaint brought against them, they probably would have to represent themselves in the municipal court if there were a conflict between the town's attorney representing them. And, you know, there is a burden of that. So you may want to consider having something like, if the complainant loses, they cover the attorney's fees or something that would disincentivize frivolous complaints.
So the town wouldn't have to represent, the town lawyer wouldn't necessarily represent the elected official like they do now?
Not, so that's another issue is that the way it happens now is that you have the initial hearing where the complainant comes to the council and says, "I'd like you to put the complaint forth." If the council says, "Yes, I agree," then the council would actually send us to municipal court to fight the complaint against whoever was acting in violation of the charter. The way this is set forth, it would send the private litigant to municipal court, which is unusual for municipal court, which only usually hears matters that are brought by the town. And that private litigant would make their own case about whether or not there's good cause to find a charter violation. So.
Okay, so. Let me get it.
The statute doesn't, doesn't say one way or the other.
Nancy, I can't hear you.
I didn't know if that was in the municipal court, that naming the statute to allow private, because this would really get into litigation.
Yeah. Yep.
With attorneys.
Right. That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. You know, it is, it's kind of problematic, just because the municipal court is only, has jurisdiction to hear violations of town ordinance and charter. And usually the town prosecutes violations of ordinance and charter. That would almost be as if, that would almost be like the town setting up a private cause of action. Like, it's if you were to pass an ordinance to say that, you know, the town of Tiverton finds that, you know, so-and-so consumes so-and-so if they have their music too loud at night or something. You don't really have the authority to set up a private cause of action. So I think you'd have to, you could have it go directly to municipal court. You'd have to work with a little bit to make sure that, I think you'd have to have the town prosecute it. But you'd have to have some level of review to make sure the town thinks it is worth prosecuting.
And what if the town determines it's not worth prosecuting? So the charter complaint is, is positive?
So the town has to prosecute the charter complaint?
Yeah.
Or the person who brings forth the charter complaint?
The town would, the town would have to prosecute. So the way it is now, the town prosecutes, and I think that's the way it would have to be. Usually it comes to the council, the council will decide whether it has merit. The council decides it has merit. That's the town essentially saying, yes, this is a charter violation and it should be prosecuted. In this situation, you know.
It would be the judge that decides if it has merit.
It would be the judge that decides it has merit. But it would also be prosecuted by a private individual, which that's, I don't know if you could do that.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't this jam up the court? Because you've got 20 guys that are having a bad day and think that somebody did something wrong, they're going to jam the court all up with?
It could. It could.
Are there other, are there other towns who have a cleaner process than what we have? I mean, are there other, are you aware of other municipalities that have a cleaner process than we have regarding charter complaints? It is a little convoluted, it is a little complicated. So I'd be open to something. I mean, I have a lot of things in here that give me, you know, heartburn, like taking out words like knowingly, so that somebody who accidentally, truly and honestly doesn't, you know, know. And this whole thing about the unauthorized expenditure thing is so loosely written that I'm not sure what's at that. Do other towns have a better?
So the basic structure is pretty much, you know, not every town has a charter complaint provision. And the basic structure is similar to other towns, which council, and if the council finds merit, sends it to the municipal court. You know, there's really not a lot, there's really no case law above the municipal court level on charter provisions. Charter violations, you know, I wonder how a court would look at it. This kind of unique process that's been set up in certain towns, if it got to that level, it really hasn't gotten to that level. But, you know, there are certain things that you could limit, you could change, you could tweak it to streamline it, I suppose.
I do have to tell you, it is confusing. Complaints against unauthorized expenditures or obligations?
Yep.
I don't understand them. Part of it.
That's already in the charter, I think, so.
Exactly, maybe like that, though?
We, yeah. And again, as with all of these, again, I, we would be delighted and have sought for some time to work side-by-side with the solicitor on making this as good as possible. But the goal here, and same thing with the knowing, where the clerk has been put in this uncomfortable situation where she's had to make this sort of state-of-mind determination, you know, I think there was some thinking that it's okay to have an adjudication of whether something crossed the line in the charter, but that doesn't mean it needs to have all these, you know, fines and removal from office. You know, there needs to be a forum to, to resolve some of those questions. And we actually think that you're seeing, you see more frivolous complaints coming against, in the current process, because it puts the clerk and the town council in positions of being accused and making political determinations that nobody thinks the judge, I don't believe anybody thinks the judge is making. But again, these are, you know, we've tried to find problem areas and solve them. And, you know, whether it hits the top five or the top 10, you know, you know, I think there's, I think there's fair discussion there. But we, I should say too, on all of these, I really appreciated Counselor Chabot's question. I mean, if there is a single charter review proposal that we think has a legal problem, I do think it's not too much to ask for, you know, some trappings of a written, I mean, you know, just, I mean, the commission has worked on this for nearly a year. And some of these, it may be just a question of where is the line with more legal certainty?
Yes. So I'd be interested in moving this, thank you, Joe. I'd be interested in moving this forward, but particularly not necessarily adopting the language that's here, but maybe asking Peter if he could help us streamline the process a little bit, make some tweaks to it. And maybe other communities have found a better, more efficient way to do this, if he'd be willing to do it. And think about at least streamlining the process?
Sure. I can do that.
This is actually, I, oh, I'm sorry.
I did speak before the Charter Commission on this, I believe, because I do have, I think I did.
He said yes.
Oh, because I do have an issue where I am kind of placed in the middle here to make decisions. I don't have a problem making those decisions. It's what others perceive me as for the decision. But that doesn't bother me. I do it as best I can. But perhaps I could kind of meet with Peter and go over a few of the examples that have created more issue and maybe he could come up with something, a process a little clearer than what we have.
So the motion?
But I can't say I, I think it's great that all these go and be litigated with private attorneys.
So would the motion be to move this question for the, for the law, for our attorney to come back with a revision of this or some kind of recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah, in consultation with the town clerk?
Sure. You know, one thing to think about, and not to get into too much detail now, but really since the role of the council was playing as the merits of a legal issue, you could actually have it that a complaint comes in, you send it to our office first, we'll draft a memo to you. You just put it on your consent agenda. If you want to accept and file it, that's fine with our recommendation and just have the recommendation kick in. If you want to have, if you want to, you know, overrule our recommendation, you could do that too. But since this really is a legal issue, you know, that might be the best way.
Or have the attorney decide it.
Just have us, yeah, just have us give you a memo on whether it's merit or not.
Even the attorney would have to find out the facts.
Yeah, would you do an investigation as well?
Still have to try to find out the facts.
Or would you take, the complaint has facially valid?
So I think, well.
Well, it sounds like you guys can work it out, and we stand willing to help too.
I mean, I think it's worth, I think it's, I think it's worth at least considering a streamlining of the process. And it sounds like the clerk would be for that too.
Yeah.
And that, you know, the solicitor's office might be the best to help us figure that out.
Yeah. And, you know, that's how we prosecute other, you know, misdemeanor crimes, zoning ordinance violations. We get a set of facts, we look at it, maybe we call people up and talk to people, and we make a decision on that basis.
And from my perspective, there's some gaps here, and we've seen that over the years. What if the complaint is against the town clerk? You know, how does that handle? That goes to the town administration. More clarity, more, more information would be good. What if it's against the town council as a whole? What happens if the town council has to recuse themselves entirely so that there isn't a quorum, or impartial, so that there isn't a quorum? So I think there's some gaps here, and we've experienced that over the, over the years. And maybe those should be what we're looking into, not replacing the entire system, but tweaking it to handle those special cases that have come up in the last few years.
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion to move forward with question 15, to ask the town solicitor and the town clerk to review those cases and to come back with some recommendations.
Second? May I remain second? Any further discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm going to vote against it, and the reason is, I don't think it's, I think it's going to clog the courts up. And if it goes directly, and this, I'm sure there's going to be five more or 10 more more important things that the people of Tiverton, this more helps politicians and guys who, whatever, complaints and stuff. I'm more interested in seeing things on the charter that help the town and not just a political group. So that's, that's why I won't be voting for it.
Motion for main and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Question 16. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to change the budget committee membership from 11 to 9 and to replace its treasurer with a docked secretary?
Yeah, that was one of them Tony said we should do a little more research on.
See, I don't have a lot of, I just have a lot of lines, though, but I don't think we actually talked about this one.
No, Tony, Tony.
This is what I think Tony said, to clarify the role of the administrative officer. I question, I think.
It's state law.
Yeah. But I don't think we talked about the beginnings of.
Right, the beginning, the beginning isn't an issue. Just to clarify the role of the administrative officer.
Okay. So, yeah, because what Tony was talking about, the ones that he had concerns with, this was one, but it was at the end.
Right.
But just, just so we're clear, the concern is not that it contradicts any current state law, it's that it unnecessarily repeats it. Would you agree with that, or?
Right. And, you know, one of, one of the issues of citing a statute in this is, you know, if the number changes or, you know, and actually, I think it might have happened in a charter with referencing a statute for reprisals. You know, it's, it doesn't really, so.
And I think I may have made this comment, we wrestled with that very thing all over the place. And there were many times where we said, why do we need to say it? There's another one of these on a, on a clerk of the school committee required by law. Do we really need to say it? But there is some assistance of having it in the charter for ease of the reader. You know, where we ultimately landed was if it was certainly no question about it and a very short recital, and it was requested, like this did come from a full request of the planning board, we tended to be sympathetic. There were other areas, I think we're going to talk a little bit about the emergency management authority, which really has a lot of duties and responsibilities. And it raised this question. We had a similar debate on the Economic Development Commission. How much do you put in a charter, especially if it's not adding to anything that's already in state law? So we, I only mean to say that we wrestle with that as well. And there are lots of instances in the charter where that does happen now. We've, we've tried to, you know, work them out as we could.
Any comments from the council?
I think that, I think that I'd heard that the planning board had actually made the suggestion on lowering their number.
Yeah.
I don't know about the budget committee. And so I'd be willing to consider it. I do have a little bit of a concern on the budget, both the budget committee and the planning board, frankly, just because, you know, the budget committee has a lot of meetings, and it's hard for everybody to make every meeting just by nature of how many the meetings they have in such a short period of time. So, you know, when you get down to, you know, you get down to nine and you have three people absent, well, you know, it's a pretty small number that's, that's voting. And I know the planning board, it's hard for them to get volunteers, but on the other hand, you know, there are many instances where planning board members have to recuse themselves because they, you know, are often involved in things in the town. And if somebody's absent and you've got, you know, three recusals, now you're down to a really small number of people making very big decisions.
So there's actually, for the planning board, there's actually a provision that requires approval of, of land development projects. You need a majority of the entire membership. So if you have a, if you have a nine-member board and someone comes in with an application and two members recuse and two members are absent, you need, then you need five members to vote in favor, you need an unanimous vote. If you had a seven-member board, then you only need four members in favor. So in one sense, having nine members makes it easier to have a forum because you have more members that can show up. But in another sense, since you need a majority of the entire membership to pass an application, sometimes it can make it more difficult. Because if you only have five, then you need five out of five. Whereas if there was only seven members and you had five, then you could, you could pass it with four.
Well, I mean, I'd be willing to move this one forward for further consideration, and I'd like to hear what the planning board said, and I'd like to hear what maybe the budget committee chair has to say.
I would like to hear what the budget committee.
So I'd be willing to send this one on if everybody agreed.
And so long as there's transition plan to.
Well, right, it's going to be difficult to decrease this right away.
All of them would require, this one, I think it actually would take something like four years or something. But, yeah, I think, you know, we're trying to be responsive to just this general sense that it's, you know, there are, you know, there's a lot of government positions and sometimes it's hard to fill them. I don't know that that's as hard on an elected body. And the only thing about, I agree that it's, it sort of works both ways because, because when you have a larger body, then, then more people can miss, but then your quorum is a little higher. So you have to be careful too, that all of a sudden, you know, you set the, you set 11 and now you need six, where if you set it at nine, then you only need five. So it's just something else to consider. But I think there's plenty of reasonable positions on this. We actually debated for some time going even lower, and we, we ended up going in a baby steps position on this.
Madam President?
I'm going to ask a stupid question. Does the budget committee actually have a treasurer? Does the Budget Committee actually have a treasurer?
It's in the charter, so this is a cleanup only.
Oh, okay.
We actually-
Right, so, so, okay.
Not only that, frankly, I mean, this is just my view, and only my view, but I don't think any of these positions need to be in. I think the bodies have inherent authority to elect their own officers, but we responded to a request of the school committee and also wanted to clean up the charter while we were in the section.
No, I think the docked secretary is a good idea. I think that's always a good answer.
All right, so is there, is there a motion to move-
I have a question for the attorney first. If we have, on the, I'm going to go with planning because they're appointed, not elected. If the Planning Board has a nine-person membership, and we can only fill seven of them, now, how does that fall?
You still need the five.
You still need the five, but we only have, we say we need nine, we have seven members sitting on the board, so now, now it goes down to as if there is only a seven-member charter. Am I correct?
Goes by the nine.
If you have a nine-member board-
No, 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 you have a nine-member board, but you can only fill seven spots.
If you have nine seats on the board-
Right.
Then you need, you need to vote the majority of your seats on the board.
Right.
So, which would be five.
Okay.
If you had a seven-member board, if you eliminated two of those seats, then you'd only need four.
Right, but if it's eliminated by attrition, you can't fill them, so.
If it's still on the books, says having nine-member seat, then you'd be better off just filling them because you'd still need five.
Suppose you can't fill them, that's what I'm saying. Suppose we don't-
You still need five.
It's only five.
Or rule of necessity. But that's shaky, right?
Yeah, that's why I just-
And that would work in a recusal.
Yeah.
But then, even that, you need to, you need to go to the Ethics Commission and ask for an advisory opinion and have them set up the way you're going to do the necessity, and that's a big pain, so. If you, if you couldn't fill the membership to nine, the best thing would be cut it to seven.
All right, so I have a motion to move this forward for consideration.
With the exception of the administrative officer.
With the exception of, from, from seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to limit the requisite, the requisite number of signatures for recall petition to a maximum of 500, with a collection period not to exceed 75 days, and to require an affirmative 55% majority vote for the subsequent recall of an elected official as recommended by the Charter Commission?
Okay, so there's a lot of words here. I'm going to try to boil it down to what I think are four concepts, and then, as before, others can tell me if I've missed something. But number one, the goal here is to add a little more clarity to the recall process and also streamline it a little bit. And one of the problems, as I always ask, that we're trying to solve, is we want to close out recall petitions that have just been floating around in the ether forever. So this is, that's one of the things that this does. This makes recalls harder and easier at the same time, depending on your perspective. First of all, you can't launch a recall election right away, okay? So there has to be a waiting period. If someone was just elected filing recall papers the next month or two, it just, it, you know, there's a balancing here, but the voters just spoke in the election. On the other hand, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to have recalls occurring really close to the next election. So what this does is it, it puts a collar, or really, it excludes a collar of dates, so that we're really talking about somebody in the middle of the term. And it also puts a cap on the number of signatures. I think of 500, I'm going to need, I might need to yield to the sponsor on this, on some of the particulars. But there's really four things going on. Not so fast on recalls, not so late on recalls, close out these petitions if they're not, let's say prosecuted within, I think it's 175-day period, is that right? And, and there's a cap on the total signatures, so, because, I mean, you know, it can depend on whether it's the type of election that you're in. Some elections, just because of national presidential, tend to have very large turnouts. And I, you know, there was this belief that there really needs to be some upper boundary. Did I, did I miss anything on that? I know there's a lot of words here, but I think that-
A 55% majority in a, a recall, if a recall is successful, it has to be 55% of the votes.
More than a majority.
More than a majority.
And it's balancing, because the majority presumably spoke when they did the election. So, but, you know, if we, if we're going to have the concept of a recall, then there needs to be a balance struck. That, that's where we were coming from.
This is another one I had, I had also requested on.
This is another one I had requested on, because quite frankly, I have every set of recall papers that have ever been filed. They've never gone anywhere, they've never reached the amount of signatures, and they're just kind of in limbo. It was to try to get a closure on them after a certain amount of time. I guess the closure is when the person is no longer in office, I guess.
I would imagine that you can't, you can't recall now. I think you can do that. What is your pleasure, Councilor? Any questions? Do I have a motion to move this forward?
I will take that.
Or not?
I, I'd be willing to consider it. I don't, it's not at the top of my priority list, but if we're just saying we'll send things forward since Nancy put it on, and there is some, I'd be willing to send it forward. I'm not sure it's like, like I said, at the top of my priority list, but I, I-
Anyone know what's fine?
Don, may I have something that I missed, or?
I, I just wanted to say that Steve Clark and Jeff looked into many of the, how this is handled in many towns, and Steve Clark did a graph, and it was glaringly obvious we were very much out of whack with some. So we kind of took the middle of the road, some were kind of, we're, we're unreasonable. Then there's some that's kind of, I mean-
Easy.
Five signatures.
Yeah.
And so we tried to be as fair as possible, tried to make also that it's not unfair to the individual that is serving, and also not unfair to the person that's bringing a recall petition. So this seemed doable, this seemed fair. I mean, if you want to see the paperwork that goes along with it, we will provide it for you.
Yeah, it'd be really great.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like a good idea. Okay, all right, thank you.
So I, I'm going to say, Trish made the motion to move it forward for consideration, and the Charter Commission will provide further information on this.
You bet.
I'll second.
The motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Question 18. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to require that town officials who receives financial benefit from an organization that collectively bargains, recuse from any and all discussions involved, or votes on financial matters related to said organization?
Madam President, I have an issue with, with this provision. So the language I'm looking at deals with current members of a labor union or collective bargaining organization, or retired union member who receives monetary benefits from such unions. So that's a broad class of people, doesn't specify town union or out-of-town union, out-of-state union, public union, private union. A lot of people fall under a union. And then it says, while serving on the town council, school committee, or budget committee, shall recuse themselves from any discussions or votes on financial matters. And that's a broad term, and then follows it up with including but not limited to, so indicating that financial matters is supposed to be read broadly. And then it says pensions, litigation, or contract negotiations. So essentially, if you were ever in a union, if you, this would make you have to recuse from many, many votes. For the Budget Committee, it would almost be saying, if you were ever in a union, you can't be on the Budget Committee, because everything they discuss is a financial matter.
Now, we have had that example, and we have gotten an opinion, and we've been told that it's okay to have that person make decisions regarding this.
Right, and, you know, so the, this is governed by the Code of Ethics, the State Code of Ethics, that will probably preempt many things you would do here.
I think it would certainly preempt this, which just kind of takes such a broad brush. But, you know, if there is a circumstance where there is a conflict of interest between someone who's receiving some type of monetary benefit and participating in a particular vote, the Ethics Commission has jurisdiction over that. And I think that's the appropriate body to go to, to determine if there's a conflict.
So if this was in the charter, and an elected official disagreed with it, and wanted to be part of it, part of the negotiations, could they go to the ethics?
Well-
That's, that's what, would they override this, or this is the charter? So it would not, not be over it?
The Ethics Commission would just give you opinion on the state ethics code.
Okay.
If you wanted to find out the interaction between this provision and the state law to see if it was preempted, you'd probably have to go to Superior Court.
Right.
But you'd also be running into the problem of, are you infringing on an elected or a potential candidate's First Amendment rights to participate in the election or participate in government by saying you need to recuse on all financial matters just because you are now or have ever been in a, in a union? So I think that's problematic.
I'll make a motion that we not put this 18 in.
Do I have a motion in second? Any discussion?
Do we have, do we get to respond to that, or are we just watching the clock?
I haven't been looked up at the time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, you know, I just-
I'd just like to explain my proposal. One of the reasons I put this in is that I see it as a conflict. Maybe others don't. But if you understand how a union works, it works like an umbrella, and I think you know this, Denise. They have the national, and then it goes to state, and then it goes to local. Now, the national has certain goals that they want to meet, and the state usually takes that on. And then the different locals, what they do when they go into bargaining, they have these goals. And it might be a new goal, but if the person's in a different local, and they're negotiating a contract, it really doesn't matter if they're in a different local, because if they're in the same union, but a different local, they're going to look at those goals, and they're going to try and get one of those goals. If it starts in one town, they start going to each town. And as each town falls to that goal, or that contract negotiation, all of a sudden, when you as a town do not want that, because now so many, they have got it in so many towns, when you go to mediation, you're going to lose. That's how it works. So it really doesn't matter if it's, oh, well, they're a teacher or a firefighter in a different town, or a different local. It's still the same problem.
But, but wouldn't you expect the elected official to be impartial and be able to negotiate for the town and not look at themselves?
That's almost impossible, because they call themselves brothers and sisters, and they work as a unit, and they work towards that, and they work together. And when you don't see that big picture, you know, you, you're missing out on something, and that's why you lose the mediation. Because instead, if you went there and you were the only town that was saying, we don't want this, and then they look around and they see that no other town has it, your likelihood is that you'll probably win. But as each, if there's a lot of different towns falling to this, it becomes mainstream. Now you're going to lose.
What I'm saying is, how is one member of the negotiation team going to make that big difference?
Well-
Because there's seven of us that make that decision.
Right, it's, it's, it's still something that you need to think about, because it's just reality. This is how it works. And I, I just want it to be more playing field for the taxpayer, because of the very way it works, the taxpayer a lot of times is outgunned, and when you go to mediation, usually you lose. And it's money. So, thank you.
So just, just real quick, at the broader level, the point about interfering with First Amendment or, or labor laws, I mean, that already happens with the state code of ethics. So this idea that there could be an ethical recusal requirement is not a new thing. All that this proposal does is it clarifies that if you're in the same umbrella organization, the same type of recusal requirements apply, and it certainly doesn't attempt to reach, and, of course, we'd be happy to work with you in making this even more clear, not every financial matter under the sun, but just the financial matters as would impact that, that umbrella organization. So, you know, this is, now, now whether we have a preemption question, which I would agree, that if this was not ratified by the General Assembly, we would have that, but I, this kind of keeps coming up, we sort of did this with the administrative officer, you know, it is okay to build upon what is existing state law, as long as it is ratified. Now, I'm not saying that necessarily that's where we want to put our top 10, but I just, I'm getting a little concerned that I'm seeing these sort of quick verbal legal opinions going by, that it may, you know, we may not want to present some of these to the General Assembly. But let's just be clear, there is a state code of ethics, there's a state ethics commission that does exactly what this proposal looks to do. This just makes it more clear to draw a tighter line than the state currently does, and it does no more or no less than that.
So you're saying that the state already says that the union has to recuse themselves?
My understanding is that if it's the same local, that the same local, the recusal is required, so.
No, it's not true.
True.
It's not true, because we've got a, a-
We're just going to rule on that.
Just going to rule.
The, the state ethics code applies what's called the class exception, where if you are a member of a large class, and you're not receiving a financial benefit to any greater or lesser degree than the rest of that class, that, that you don't need to recuse under the ethics code.
Yeah, because we did get that decision on-
So this draws the class line in a way that may be tighter and tivered, and then in state law application, which maybe people agree with or disagree with, but the concept of this adding clarity to the class exception is not this sort of new concept. So I, you can disagree on the merits, I just want to make sure it doesn't, you know, this isn't a wholesale new concept that's come in.
And, was it Joe?
Well, I know we, we went through the ethics with, with Joe, and certainly Randy's part, a member of a union. Certainly it's not the, any union that's part of our unions in town. Certainly I would agree, maybe if, if the member, the union member was part of the management structure within the union, but to, to have it just be any member, I think is, is overstepping. That's why we have the Ethics Commission. If there's any question, then they go to them. Certainly, members, individual members, not the leadership of a union, has just the power to vote on, on the contract that's negotiated. And whether they have any direct impact is, I think it's mostly the leadership that does, and not individual members. So I, I think the Ethics Commission is, is, it's what's in place, and I think that's, that's fair.
Yeah, and then we'll have Sally go ahead. Oh, is that good, Sally, okay?
Oh, sure.
I agree with Councilor Shalvid. I think that the Ethics Commission is there, they're in place, and, you know, the application of the Ethics Commission under state law. And the other thing that I think that, you know, we have to balance here a little bit is that there's almost a built-in presumption that an entire category of people who have, who are in a union or who were in a union somehow are less trustworthy with the voter's interests. And, and I find that a little offensive, and by the way, I'm not in a union and have never been in a union, but nonetheless, I do. And I would actually say that I've had the opposite experience in that I find the perspective of people that I've worked with who have union experience to be beneficial, and, and I find that they really do have the town's best interest at heart, first and foremost, which is why they ran for office, I think. which is why they ran for office, I think. And that recusing them from discussions and votes would actually eliminate information that is, I find useful for the town in understanding how, you know, we get the best services, you know, for the town when we negotiate things. So I actually, my experience has been totally opposite and I'm not for sending this one forward. Thank you for holding my microphone, Joe.
Chris Thomas having a hard time hearing me.
Sally, I'm sorry.
Yes, we debated this during the process and I agree with PETA. This is much too broad. I'm a proud member of the Massachusetts Teachers Association, retired, has nothing to do with any negotiation I've ever been in, not the same pension numbers, not anything. I wouldn't be able to vote on any of these if this passed. I also agree with Trish. It amazes me because if there's a plane crash, they call a pilot on TV to talk about it. If an astronaut has something wrong in the space, they call an astronaut. If there's something you want to talk about in education, ask a teacher, okay? And we've been through negotiations in this town, Denise and I sat through them. And you look at the record, you have to think about the schools and everything and we have to think about the taxpayers. And I think you can look at our record, police fire and teachers, and I think that's what everybody has done in this town. I understand, Mrs. Cook, your concerns of the brotherhood and we'll all go along, but that's not how it happens. It really isn't. So I really objected to this one when they were going through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shalvid.
Madam President?
Yeah.
Just because you belong to a union doesn't mean you agree with everything they stand for.
Anyone else?
Just one final comment. We had Brett Pelletier on the council and he actually did recuse himself because his father was part of the union. He was not himself part of a union and, but he chose that...
He chose to do it.
To do that, so that there wouldn't be any questions. So, you know, and I believe he did get an ethics opinion, but he chose to do it that way. So I think it's each individual and working with the Ethics Commission.
Anyone else?
I make a motion to not move this item forward?
Second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and I have a second, deny me a second? Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any hand in mind? Nineteen. The Tivitan Town Charter to be amended to clarify management must be staffed by an existing department head and the powers and duties of the Tivitan Emergency Management Agency as recommended by the Charter Commission. Want to explain that? Please. Is that ours? Oh, that is ours.
Well, yeah, there was one...
In that, in just in the...
That is ours, but it's not.
In an effort to get through things, if you remember, Chief Lloyd put that, Chief Lloyd put that together and then, thank you, Jan, and then Paul McGreevy sent it forward. It was a change to the language about the EMA thing.
Oh, yeah.
Which I'm willing to send forward, although I'd like Jan to revisit it as the current town administrator. And not that I know that you guys didn't work on it, but in the, in an effort to get through as many as we can, I'm trying to speed this along, so I...
Just so you know, the language is yours.
Is ours, right.
It was, it was actually Paul and the chief, now that you say it.
So I'd make a motion to pass that along, although I'd like, I'd like the new town administrator to review it for his comments for us.
Second.
Motion remains second.
Second.
I heard you. All those in favor? Any other? Now, question twenty, we voted not to put on. Now, we decided to only do twenty, but I did ask everyone to look at the next twenty and see if there's any other questions on. And then Rob, if you have, still have, okay. All right, so why don't...
Does anybody else have some? I have some in the next twenty, but I don't have to...
I may have what you have.
I don't have to go first.
Does anyone? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I think, I think twenty-one I'm good with, and if I'm not mistaken, that just moves that into this section of the charter where the other, where the other offices are because it was kind of out of place. Am I correct? And it was, that was...
That was, yeah. That was Paul.
So...
Just going to give one.
So I'd make a motion to send that one forward again, though with the review of the current town administrator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
I have to admit, I have a que, on twenty-two, it says...
Housekeeping.
Right. But that's okay that that's, it's legal?
Yeah, that's fine. That just refers to your initial adoption. You had to keep it in place for two years. You passed the two years, so you can keep it, get rid of it.
So, so I, again, I'd make a motion to send, I'd make a motion to send twenty-two on.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have discussion?
Well, I just think that we're getting a lot and I'm not sure that this is, rises to the top.
It might rise to housekeeping, if we combine more.
Yeah.
A bunch of them together.
Some of them could be combined together.
So why don't we move it forward and then we can decide?
I'm sorry, who's second?
Nobody's.
I'll second.
I had discussion without a second because I knew somebody had concerns. Motion remains second. All those in favor? Okay.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So I don't know, I, twenty-three came from...
Yep, so, so twenty-three was, it was either the town treasurer or the town clerk. I don't want to put them on the spot, but part of this was to add clarity that not just, one of the two is already there and we wanted to make sure that both or all full-time elected officials could receive health insurance benefits from the town. We did modify that slightly to ensure that it was comparable with municipal department heads, which we thought was a, was a fair, a fair approach. But this was being responsive to a non-commissioner request.
I'd make a motion to send that one forward as a potential housekeeping thing. Which one is there now? The clerk is, but not the treasurer?
We add the treasurer.
But the treasurer does at this time get house benefits.
Which we...
She probably chose not to.
We, and our, our view is that that is okay if it's approved in FTR, but this removes any doubt.
I'd make a motion to send that one on as a potential housekeeping item.
Second.
Motion remains second. All those in favor?
I'll just say this, on twenty-four, I'm not in favor of sending twenty-four forward because I'm not sure what it entirely means. I mean, you know, the budget that's approved by the voters, other than to limit the possibility that the council needs to transfer money. So I'm not in favor of that one. I'm not in favor of twenty-five. Twenty-six, I think this was submitted by Madam Clerk and this is about...
What are we doing with twenty-four, twenty-five?
Me, I mean, everybody else can do it. I'm just like quickly going through mine.
And if anyone doesn't agree with this, just speak up.
Yeah, I mean, if this is on your list, say it, but I'm, I've...
What is the goal here? I mean, are we supposed to react? I mean, there's a question, we, you know, we didn't, we didn't just make this stuff up. So we have explanations if you want them.
Well, the explanations are on here.
Right.
But I haven't had any chance to read it.
So, you know, so I don't know, maybe, maybe instead of rushing through these, we're happy to come back, but I...
I might be confused. I thought the, I thought the instruction, and maybe I got this wrong, was...
The instructions was, oh, we go through twenty?
We go through twenty and then it's...
And that was your priorities, I would assume.
Yeah, I just, if you ask a question, like you don't know what it's here, I've got answers and I'd love to explain them besides, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and so, anyway, all right, well, you, you know...
I told everyone that to go home. Apparently we just got this, I, we just got this last night. I had it.
It's language, you know, the questions change.
All I'm trying to say is, it's one thing for you to disagree with the proposal on policy grounds, but if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're so quickly disposing in the work of an elected commission that's worked with them for a year because you don't know why it's there, we would love the opportunity to explain it, but I don't want to rush you tonight, so I'm just here with a, you know, welcoming the opportunity to continue to, continue the conversation. Although I get it that, I think we both share the view that we're not going to put forty, fifty proposals on, so there's a time management there. So I'll defer to you on that.
I thought the idea was that the top twenty was the list that we really had to go through, but then if anybody had one from the twenty to forty list that they thought they wanted to send forward for consideration that they should do it, and I'll admit, I took my assignment and I went home and I read through all of them and said, okay, this is, you know, these are the ones that make sense to me, that at least I'd like to say we should throw into the hopper. They might not all make it, but that was my...
Yeah, that's, that's what my intention was.
So I can stop now or I'll, I'll tell you the other ones that I thought I was interested in. And I did, just so you know, I read all the backup that was provided for this, the reasons, the explanation, the language, everything. I didn't just read the questions. I did go through everything.
Now, Joan actually just read this.
I discussed this.
Yeah, I know, because...
So I went through the original twenty and the forty, up to forty, but there was a lot of questions because I wanted to see more backup or be able to discuss it.
So do you want me to, so, so you need to agree with, so would you like to go through the next?
Actually, I'd like to figure out how many we have right now. If we move forward, we can figure that out.
One, two, three, four, five, six, yeah. I have twelve. Can I go over the ones I have?
We only have one not to bring forward, right?
No.
Nine, ten.
I'm talking the last meeting I've got. So I can go...
So for tonight, we only have one that we've not brought forward out of twenty, twenty-four.
Two that's not brought forward.
We have two?
Twenty and eighteen.
Oh, we have twenty.
So does everyone agree with twelve? I have twelve.
Okay, we have two we didn't bring forward tonight.
Yeah, I'm talking the line over the course of both weeks. We brought forward twelve. That was something we can't read. It's just, there's a lot.
Yeah, well, you're pretty, you're pretty close in your nine o'clock, well, we're happy to stay as long as you want, but I'm just trying to advocate that, you know, we want to make sure, if there's questions, we want the shot to answer them. We can talk about them offline, too. I know this isn't the final night of everything.
We can go through twenty-one, twenty-two if you like. It's going to require another meeting with that number.
Another meeting?
Another meeting. And then keep in mind, let me get a little, if we have another meeting with the Charter Commission, then we need to have, we need to have our own individual meeting to decide how we're going to wrap this up and then we have to have a public hearing.
And the Board of Camesters need to certify the results by August eighth.
Okay. So we're, we're limited here. But now, very well, we still have, next, we have almost four weeks and there's some of us going away. Yes, you are away.
Yes.
All right.
We have some due.
Yeah, I could meet next week, next Monday, if we wanted to go through the other twenty, if people want to take this home and digest it. Won't you like first?
I'm game. I'll do whatever you want to do.
So that would be Monday.
But I think you got enough.
I'm good.
We have enough out there now, but I'll be more than happy to go through them and look at them.
I mean, I, that to me...
Can you guys do Monday though? It's possibly July week.
We can. We'll definitely have a, we'll have a quorum or at least some of our officers here, again, we're...
It's possibly July week and I realize that...
It's right in the middle of the week, so I think most of us are in work mode, but...
Just let's go over the remainder and find out if there's any that you really want to move forward.
Yeah, but we can't do that without, we've got to do that with all seven of us.
You couldn't vote, you couldn't vote on them, no. But you could look at them, email our office individually and directly, and we could take an assessment of what there's interest in. We could put it on either a special meeting or in a regular meeting if there is any interest in particular items.
But that doesn't allow us to talk about it and, you know what I mean, the need to answer us back, didn't it?
I think the fair thing to do, if everybody's getting to meet on Monday, is to go, is everybody, I'm sorry, I mean, I thought everybody had this minded and like, sorry, thank you. But, but if everybody, if the rest of the council hasn't had time to digest it and wasn't prepared to say, these are ones I'm interested in, then I think we should just try and have another meeting as soon as we can and everybody go through the things and then we can ask the questions like we did with the first twenty.
They get easier as you go on, too.
So that would be Monday, okay. And then, do we have a second meeting that week with just the council?
That's fourth of July week, it's going to be hard.
No, okay, so then we go the following week?
Yes.
And that's when we clean it all up?
Yep. Works for me.
Except that I'm not available. So you guys can do it, but I, I am, this is a town council meeting on Monday, I'm available for that, but then I go away.
What are you talking about?
You can definitely do it without me. I don't care as long as you have a quorum.
Well, what...
So if you want, and if I don't go away, then I do have to ask.
So what, if we have a second meeting the first week, what are the date options for that?
Well, that's very tough, so why don't you just do it the second week?
You can't do Monday the second.
I can do Monday the second.
Okay.
It's, it's our meeting then.
And then the ninth is our meeting, which I'll be here for. We could, if you wanted to, we could...
And you're not here that week, the meeting's a lot of time.
My vacation week is eighth through the fifteenth.
I think we should try and fit it in the week before. I mean, I think it's important that everybody or that we're all here for this.
When is the public hearing going to be and what...
We have to make that plan, too.
Okay, and then what are we going to bring forward with the council decides that should be put on?
Would be the second meeting, which would be the meeting we're trying to figure out.
Okay, so the first, the meeting on Monday, the second will be to finish these last, and then the next meeting, we'll, we'll go through them and say, this is what we're going to put on.
We want to put on, and we'll have the public hearing.
On, on the five to ten that we're going to put on the, I'll make any of them. I'll even go on a Thursday if you need.
How about July fifth?
Okay.
July fifth, that's a Thursday.
Yeah.
I'll be away, but that's fine.
So that would be the council meeting discussing this.
That's for council meeting, but July second is going to be a continuation of tonight's, just to continue tonight's meeting. I'm not going to repost.
And let's talk about the public hearing.
And then you're talking the fifth for just a base air.
Council meeting.
The ninth, we have a meeting. I have to advertise ten days before.
Why do you have to advertise?
I have to advertise public hearing.
Oh, for the public hearing, I'm sorry, okay.
So what about the thirtieth for your public hearing?
Oh, I would think in the, the week of the sixteenth or the week of the twenty-third.
Yeah, I've got to get that in there by then.
Why?
Because I can't get it advertised. I don't even have the language to have. I don't have anything to, I don't know which ones are going on.
How about the twenty-third? How about the week of the twenty-third?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third, we have a meeting on Monday.
About the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth.
I don't think we should wait till the thirtieth if we need, because if we have a second...
As soon as you can.
We also want time for them to get the language together. We also want time for them to get the language together, so they get all the language together. I mean, I can't, it's, it's got a-
I know, but what I'm saying is, we don't have time.
He's got from the fifth to the twenty-fourth.
If you do July thirtieth, then we have to get it to them by the eighth.
No, we pay them big money. Should be able to do it.
What has to be included in the advertisement? The actual wording?
No, not the actual wording, but the topics of each one have to be, the concept has to be there, not the exact wording, but that has to be made available.
So, can we have the public hearing on the twenty-sixth?
You have from the fifth to the twenty-sixth to come up with the language?
To the twenty-sixth. And then, if I need to have a second meeting, I could always do it the thirtieth.
So, there'll be a, there's a meeting on the second, which will be a joint meeting.
Right.
A meeting on the fifth, which would be the council meeting to wrap up with everyone's and on- And then, the twenty-sixth would be the public hearing. Twenty-sixth. That'll give you time to do your language.
And then, I would like all the councils to kind of keep the thirtieth free, just in case I have to continue it to another night.
Fine.
Sounds good to everyone? I'm sorry, I'm doing, like, in front of us.
No, it's fine.
Well, it's nice for you guys to know what we're doing, too.
No, it's good. We'll, we'll be there on the second, and if you need us anywhere else, just call me.
Okay. All right, thank you. Everyone standing for one moment, not you guys.
So, all right, so I, I still have a quorum, so we're just gonna, we're gonna move to the back, and we're just gonna handle some scheduling matters, so you can proceed with your meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Have a nice night. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I should get a copy of this, so everybody can read it. Two seconds. There's just, there's-
So, after this meeting on the fifth, I can't use it because I'm not being the fifth.
You would have to, from the town administrator, an email, you may have to- Oh, it's here.
I think that there's swiftly before.
I have the one from the last time, and I could send it to you. Change the topics.
So, this on the agenda as an emergency item? And I'll call it emergency expenditures. Madam President, I make a mo-, I make a motion to amend the agenda to include the item emergency expenditure. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion remains second, all those in favor? So, I'm just going to have everybody read it, and then I'll have, have you explain it. Jan, is that sort of right? Okay, Sam, questions? I got it. And it's a public document, so I'll just leave it here for anyone who wants to look at it. Or you should. Oh, Joan, do you have one, or did I just give it away?
What?
No, Trish has one.
No, it's this.
This is an emergency expenditure item that Jan, um, had talked to me about, and since we're all here, I think instead of me signing it, we'll all vote on it.
Trish made the motion to add, did somebody second?
Yeah, Randy. It wasn't, well, Jill was in the bathroom, but. Jan, would you like to explain it?
Sure, thank you. So, yesterday, I was told by Kim that the DPW mower broke. And obviously, we're in the middle of the season, and we need a machine that works. The arm broke off. There was some question whether the machine was worth repairing. He thinks currently that it is worth repairing, has been calling around. And depending on exactly how much must be replaced to fix it, it will be at least twenty-one hundred and thirty dollars. In the worst case, it would be fifty-eight hundred and sixty dollars. So, I believe it's important to go forward with that. To replace the entire machine would be a whole lot more expensive, and I think we need to do a better job figuring out how much, what prices are available, et cetera, et cetera. But I would recommend that the council approve an expenditure, even if it exceeds twenty-five hundred dollars, as needed.
It'll come from the DPW account?
Correct.
Question.
Yeah.
Question. Did he state which one he was going to do, because he mentioned two different ones to me?
I'm glad it did to you. He didn't do it to me. I think the one that is broken. I don't know which one that is.
Well, he stated, if, to go with the one that it had now, would probably be a waste of money, that he would rather go with a different type, which might be a little bit more.
Well, is that with the twenty-three, thirty, fifty, seventy?
It could be, but that's what he said.
I think it's, it's a pretty large range here. He currently thinks we don't have to pay that fifty-eight hundred, but he's still-
He just told me the one that broke now is kind of obsolete.
That's what he told me initially, and then he recommended that, instead of going for a whole new one-
Right.
-let's try for one that can get us through the year.
Right.
And then, make plans for a bigger purchase down the line. And if it was a lot more money to do the repair, I would probably say we should just purchase a new one somehow, but I, I think this is the right recommendation at this time.
So, the motion would be to not spend more than fifty-eight sixty?
Correct.
And then, it would give you the lay weight of, and we don't have to go up to this because this is an emergency.
Right. Right, so, that would be, now, it's a emergency officer, so we made the certification, and I said, all right.
And the only reason why we have to approve it is because it could be over twenty-five.
Correct. I'll make that a motion to approve the repair of the mower, not to exceed the fifty-eight sixty.
And for it to come from DPW accounts.
DPW accounts, yes.
And then, you can transfer as appropriate.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any other questions? All those in favor? The second one?
The second one is different in nature. We actually have been working on how we plan for the future of our technology infrastructure, or, and knowing that we have to replace certain equipment. However, this was made more urgent by the recent warnings that we got about ransomware, and that the attacks actually have occurred in this particular area, so we are concerned about it. There are certain pieces of equipment that increase our vulnerability, and that if we replace them with the equipment that's being proposed here, we actually protect ourselves a whole lot more. The equipment in question is a network storage device, which would replace a server, but also add to some of the functionalities that we need, and replacing a router that is already showing signs of breaking up, and replace it with a more powerful one. The two together would increase the vulnerability, the protection from such attacks, according to the IT consultant that we have, David Renagria. They would also be consistent or compatible with longer-term plans that we're working on, that look at what kind of computer structure or infrastructure structure should we have, in terms of what kind of computers we need, what kind of software we use, whether we should go to cloud-based computing, so that we're not wasting money on equipment that we would then need to replace anyway for a new approach to this. It's compatible with that. And the estimated cost is thirty-one hundred dollars. That includes installation, and that exceeds twenty-five hundred, which is why I asked for the council approval, given the threat, and it is a significant one, it has been in the news quite a bit. I would suggest that we, we don't wait with this.
And that would come from FY eighteen balances, as recommended by-
That's correct. I discussed it with the treasurer, and she believes that we can find the money in this year's budget.
So, the motion would be thirty-one hundred to be taken from what's recommended by the treasurer and the town administrator. How's that sound to everyone? Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the spending of thirty-one hundred dollars to upgrade the computer network equipment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think David has identified a place where he can get this, and he would do it, I think, within the next couple of weeks, if, if possible, in one week. But, yeah, so, he makes it a top priority, so.
As part of the motion, just put funds to be determined by the town administrator and treasurer. Okay. Is that all right? Do I ever meet that motion?
Yes.
All right.
That's fine.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.